Welcome to Cabarrus County Schools February 10th Business Meeting. I'm going to introduce the folks here on the dais. We have Caleb Snow, our Teacher of the Year. We have our new Board Member Shannon Lancaster. We have another Board Member Catherine Moore. Board Member Sam Tredaway. Our Superintendent Dr. John Kapicki. Myself, Rob Walter, Board Chair. Our Board Vice Chair Greg Mills. Our Board Member Pamela Escobar. And our Board Member Melanie Freeman. And our SRO tonight is Travis Burke from Harris Road Middle. So thanks for being here. And with that, we will get started with our opening ceremony.
Presenting our nation's colors tonight are members of the Central Cabarrus and West Cabarrus High Schools JROTC. And their personnel includes Cadet Technical Sergeant Justin Ramos Bravo. Cadet Airman First Class Addison Beck. Cadet Airman Basic, Skylin Esparza. And Cadet Airman Basic, Maquisha Sharif.
Right, pace. Forward, march.
Honoring America tonight with the playing of our National Anthem and singing of our National Anthem are members of the WR Odell Roaring Dragon Chorus. And the Director of the Odell Music Program is Mr. Patrick McCarthy. Thank you.
Please be seated. So after the outstanding performance, we thank these students. First item here is to set our agenda. So our agenda's been posted on Board Docs. I'll need a motion and a second to amend, or not to amend, to approve our agenda.
So move.
Motion by Mr. Tredaway.
Second.
Second by Mr. Mills. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, our agenda is set. So moving right along to our Item Four, which is Recognitions. We have our Impact Through Education Awards. And I'm going to ask Mr. Phil Furr to come to the podium.
Mr. Chair, Members of the Board, Dr. Kapicki, good evening. Tonight, we will present Impact Through Education Awards to students and staff at Charles E. Boger Elementary School and Northwest Cabarrus High School. Our sponsors for the Impact Awards are our friends at Equitable. At this time, I would like to invite our Equitable Representatives Emily Satterly and Phoebe San O to join me at the front of the room. Before we get started with the awards, please accept our sincere thanks and gratitude to Equitable for its continued sponsorship of the Impact Through Education Awards. Tonight, we continue our 15th year of honoring those making an impact in our schools with this award. We appreciate your support and thank you for helping us celebrate and recognize deserving students and staff. We also want to say a word of thanks to our Cabarrus Regional Chamber and to Concord Trophy Center for providing us with the award plaques each month. Now, on to tonight's awards. May I have the Charles E. Boger Administrative Team come forward, please? Our first honoree from Charles E. Boger is Julie Anne Helms. Julie Anne, please come forward with your family. Julie Anne is a 5th grade student with a love for learning. She's involved in multiple academic and school-related activities such as Math Olympiad, AIG, and a member of the school broadcast team. Julie Anne is also a member of the school Chorus. She has the lead role in Boger's upcoming production of 101 Dalmatians. She readily participates in whole group learning as well as takes responsibility for her independent learning needs. When working in small groups, she is sure to involve everyone and hears out the opinion of others. Congratulations, Julie Anne. You're an Impact Through Education Award winner for Charles E. Boger Elementary School.
Congratulations.
Our next honoree from Charles E. Boger is Luke Van Popple. Luke, please come forward with your family. Luke is currently a 5th grade student at Boger. His energy and passion for learning is contagious. He is always engaged and eager to learn. Luke is quick to help another student who is struggling with a concept, and he is involved with many school programs including Math Olympiad, AIG, 101 Dalmatians, and Chorus. Congratulations, Luke. You're an Impact Through Education Award winner for Charles E. Boger Elementary School.
I got it. Congratulations.
Also from Boger is Support Staff Member Kristen Reinker. Ms. Reinker, please come forward with your family. Kristen is a vital part of the everyday operations at Boger Elementary. As the Front Office Secretary, she greets each and every person that enters the building with a smile and assists them with whatever need they may have. She has a positive attitude and maintains a calm demeanor that makes everyone feel safe and secure. Kristen often has wonderful suggestions for how we can work to improve our school. She promotes a love of learning, literacy, and a sense of community for everyone that she comes into contact with at Boger. Congratulations, Kristen. You're an Impact Through Education Award winner for Charles E. Boger Elementary. And finally, from Charles E. Boger is School Psychologist Mimi Pages. Ms. Pages, please come forward with your family. Mimi Pages is the school psychologist at Boger Elementary. She serves as a huge advocate for students, staff, and families. In her role as school psychologist, she partners with adults at Boger to ensure that the needs of the whole child are being met. Mimi has provided parents with important resources around the understanding of social-emotional intelligence and has taken on a leadership role in the Exceptional Children Department due to a large number of beginning teachers. She is always willing to lend a hand, problem-solve, and work directly with students across the school building. She is responsive and dependable every day on campus. Congratulations, Mimi. You're an Impact Through Education Award winner for Charles E. Boger Elementary School. We will now continue with our February Impact Through Education Awards by welcoming Northwest Cabarrus High School. May I have the Northwest Cabarrus Administrative Team come forward, please? Our first honoree from Northwest Cabarrus High School is Sweta Dharmesh Chashki. Sweta, please come forward with your family. As a well-rounded student in the Academy of Health Sciences, Sweta is developing a strong foundation in the sciences and critical thinking. Her academic seriousness and commitment to excellence are commendable and a model for others. As a leader in both the Academy of Health Science as well as in HOSA, Sweta's willingness to help with other high, help other high school students excel is a testament to her empathy, kindness, and sense of community. Sweta shares her knowledge and expertise which creates a positive impact on her peers and sets a high bar for others to follow. We are so proud of Sweta and know that she will continue to be an ambassador for health science and striving to always be her best self. Congratulations, Sweta. You're an Impact Through Education Award winner for Northwest Cabarrus High School. Our next honoree from Northwest Cabarrus is Le Chan Wu Sapala. Le Chan Wu, please come forward with your family. Le Chan is one of the most gifted mathematicians that has ever passed through the halls of Northwest Cabarrus High School. He is a highly motivated learner and self-studies topics that are beyond the scope of any courses he is currently taking. Le Chan is also one of the most sought-after student tutors at Northwest Cabarrus and has spent countless hours assisting others in understanding a subject he enjoys. He works with the Math 1 and Math 3 students during Trojan Time weekly to help them consider math problems from a different perspective. He uses his visual impairment as strength and motivation to not only get the best out of himself, but also to serve as a model for others to do the same. Le Chan is just as generous with his time when it comes to assisting the faculty or pushing their thinking during classroom discussions. We're fortunate to have students like Le Chan and look forward to seeing the great things he will accomplish in the future. Congratulations, Le Chan. You're an Impact Through Education Award winner for Northwest Cabarrus High School. Next, from Northwest Cabarrus is Staff Member Anita Bell. Ms. Bell, please come forward with your family. Ms. Anita Bell is one of the nicest, hardest-working, and dedicated employees that you ever encounter. She possesses qualities and abilities that enable her to work in a diverse high school environment as well as contribute to the overall success of Northwest Cabarrus High School. She is always busy making Northwest a nicer and more sparkly version of itself and does so with a smile and hello to students, staff, and visitors alike. In addition to her daily duties, she is willing to drive students on field trips and then return to complete her normal work hours. She can be seen regularly at home as well as away athletic events supporting Northwest student athletes. Trojan Nation is honored to recognize such a wonderful and well-deserving person. Congratulations, Anita. You're an Impact Through Education Award winner for Northwest Cabarrus High School. And finally, from Northwest Cabarrus is Teacher Jill Biggs. Ms. Biggs, please come forward with your family. Mistress Jill Biggs consistently supports and promotes the history and traditions of Trojan Nation. She is loyal, proud, a Spirit Squad founder, and has made vital contributions to the educational program at Northwest Cabarrus High School. Ms. Biggs is an all-around team player, ready to jump in and help out any staff member or student at the drop of a hat. She is someone you want as part of your department, team, staff, or especially to teach your children. She is consistently nominated by her peers for Teacher of the Year, CTE Teacher of the Year, and Northwest Cabarrus High School Teacher of the Month. She brings in unmatched energy and spirit to the Northwest Cabarrus campus and to her classroom. Jill can be found at many Northwest athletic events as well as running or supporting so many other school-related programs or activities with her entire family in tow, cheering on her students. In addition to her extracurricular support, Ms. Biggs strives to give her students the best classroom experiences that she can by seeking out creative and engaging opportunities for learning. Her students adore her, trust her, and request her classes at a rate that would require two interior design teachers. Finally, her passion for teaching, love for her students, and all things Northwest make her one of the heartbeats of their school. Congratulations, Jill. You're an Impact Through Education Award winner for Northwest Cabarrus High School. This concludes our Impact Award presentations for tonight. Congratulations to all our recipients, and thanks again to our partners Equitable and the Cabarrus Chamber of Commerce for your partnership.
Thank you, Mr. Furr, for the well-deserved recognitions. We'll move on to 4.02, which is our Hillbush Teacher of the Month. And I've got Dr. Michael Williams podium.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Board Members, Dr. Kapicki, and viewing audiences both here and watching the livestream. It is my pleasure to recognize our Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month for February. We always want to begin with expressing our sincere thanks and gratitude to Mr. Tim Vaughn and Hillbush Ford for their tremendous generosity and continued sponsorship of this wonderful recognition program. Our Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month for February is Karen Wright, an art teacher at Hickory Ridge High School. At this time, I'd like to invite Ms. Wright, her family, and any members of the Hickory Ridge High School Administrative Team who are here to please come forward. Tonight, I would like to share the nomination for Ms. Wright, which was submitted by a Hickory Ridge High School parent. Parent wrote, "Mrs. Wright is amazing. She saw potential in my son, who has autism and has taken his artwork to the next level. She created a whole display of his work and has repeatedly featured him on Instagram. She created videos, a video of his peers holding his artwork and has made him feel a part of the Hickory Ridge community. She has gone far beyond to include him. My son wants to go to school each day because of Mrs. Wright, and we're so very grateful for all she has done." Ms. Wright, thank you for the impact that you have made to teach, engage, and inspire the students in your classroom, and congratulations on your selection as Cabarrus County Schools' Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. Our next item is 4.03, is our Everyday Hero Award. And we have Dr. Jonathan Bowers and Stephanie Almond are going to come to the podium to share that award.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Members of the Board, and Dr. Kapicki. If I could have Ms. Cheryl Gion and any special guest with her join us down front tonight? This evening, we're here to honor and celebrate an extraordinary member of the Auxiliary Services Team. This is an individual who embodies the true spirit of what it means to be a hero. Sponsored by Great Wolf Lodge, the recipient of this month's Everyday Hero Award is someone who has consistently gone above and beyond, touching the lives of many through acts of kindness, dedication, and selflessness. Our honoree is not one who seeks recognition or applause, but one who finds joy in making a difference no matter how big or how small. Whether it's through volunteering countless hours, supporting those in need, or simply motivating others to simply be their best, this individual should serve as an inspiration for all of us. Their tireless efforts have not only brought positive change, but have also reminded us of the power of compassion and the impact that one person can have. It is with great admiration and gratitude that we present this month's Everyday Hero Award to Ms. Cheryl Gion, a member of the School Nutrition Team at Patriots Elementary School. Joining me here tonight is Ms. Stephanie Almond, our Director of School Nutrition, and she's going to share with you why Ms. Gion was chosen as this month's recipient.
Ms. Gion has been a member of the SMP team since 2013 and currently serves at Patriots Elementary as the second-in-charge. Cheryl was nominated for this award by her field supervisor, Dixie Presswood. Three months ago, Cheryl was asked to step in to serve as interim manager for a few months. With only two weeks to prepare, Cheryl was determined to learn everything she could from her manager before stepping into this important position. Since November, she's been successfully managing Patriots Cafeteria. Despite facing challenges such as staffing shortages and equipment issues, Cheryl has handled everything with confidence and composure. Her dedication and problem-solving skills have been remarkable. Cheryl is an invaluable asset to the Cabarrus County School Nutrition Program and deserves recognition for her outstanding efforts and hard work. Congratulations.
Okay, we'll move on to 4.04. We'll bring back Dr. Williams for our North Carolina Beginning Teacher of the Year.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Dr. Kapicki, and Members of the Board. I am very excited this evening to welcome Dr. Brock Wambel, who is the Executive Director of the, of NCAT, which is our, I'm going to let you give them the North Carolina Center for the Advancement of Teaching, right? See, look at me getting it. And they do phenomenal work, but they also work directly with our Beginning Teacher of the Year Award process, and so I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Wambel to celebrate one of our, the state finalists, who is a teacher here in Cabarrus County.
Good evening, Members of the Cabarrus County Board Education Superintendent. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you for the opportunity to be here. I'd like to introduce and ask Summer Espinoza to please come forward at this time, along with Justin Parmenter, our NCAT Board of Trustees member. On behalf, as you come forward, on behalf of the North Carolina Center for the Advancement of Teaching, it is my privilege to announce that Summer Espinoza has been selected as a finalist for the NCAT 2025 Borough's Welcome Fund. Oh, and Natalia Mejia is also here, I apologize. She was the 2023 NCAT Beginning Teacher of the Year winner for the state of North Carolina, so very glad for her to be here again tonight, too. So on behalf of the North Carolina Center for the Advancement of Teaching, it is my privilege to announce that Summer Espinoza has been selected as a finalist for the NCAT 2025 Borough's Welcome Fund North Carolina Beginning Teacher of the Year Award. This recognition highlights Ms. Espinoza's exceptional contributions to the teaching profession and her remarkable impact on the students and the community here in Cabarrus County. The Beginning Teacher of the Year Award was established to celebrate the creativity, resilience, and dedication of first-year teachers across North Carolina. Each year, more than 7,000 new educators enter classrooms statewide, and this award recognizes those who exemplify the best of the teaching profession while addressing the unique challenges of beginning teachers. Summer Espinoza will be attending a week of professional development with her fellow finalists in March. On March 27th, NCAT will celebrate all finalists at a recognition event on the campus of the University of North Carolina at Greensboro. At NCAT, we are committed to advancing teaching as an art and a profession, and we are thrilled to celebrate Ms. Espinoza as a shining example of this mission. Please join me in congratulating Summer Espinoza on this outstanding achievement. We are pleased to provide you with a certificate recognizing you as the NCAT 2025 Borough's Welcome Fund North Carolina Beginning Teacher of the Year. In addition, we invite Kristen Bryan on behalf of Empower to present Summer Espinoza with a check for $250. Empower supports North Carolina educators and their retirement investment plans. I am thankful for Empower's support of education in North Carolina. Thank you for being here tonight to celebrate this outstanding educator. We appreciate Cabarrus County Schools for recognizing Summer Espinoza and the NCAT Beginning Teacher of the Year program. So, thank you very much, please give them a hand. Board members, thank you very much for supporting this program. We're so proud to have a winner of the past, and you have an excellent candidate this year. Thank you for the time tonight.
Thank you so much. All right, we'll transition to our business portion of the meeting, and we're going to go on to item number five, which is approval of minutes. So we've got the minutes from the January 6th work session, we have the minutes from the January 13th business meeting, and then we have the minutes from the January 25th mid-year planning session. You've all had an opportunity to review those. If there are any changes, now would be the time to mention that. If not, I would like a motion and a second to approve these minutes.
So moved, second.
Okay, so a motion by Mr. Mills, a second by Mr. Treadaway. Any further discussion on minutes? All right, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Anybody opposed? Okay, our minutes have been passed. So we'll move on to Section 6, which is Board Chair and Superintendent Comments, and I'll start with the Board Chair comments. And tonight, I think I'm going to talk about the Career and Technical Education. February is Career and Technical Education, or CTE, month, and I invite you to join us in celebrating the critical role that CTE programs play in preparing our students for future success. Through hands-on learning, industry certifications, and real-world experiences, CTE empowers students with the skills they need to thrive in college, career, and beyond. Cabarrus County Schools is proud to offer diverse CTE opportunities that enhance student engagement, academic achievement, and workforce readiness. These programs are designed to align with industry standards and provide valuable career pathways that support both students and our local economy. Throughout this month, our schools will be highlighting CTE by showcasing student projects, partnering with local businesses, promoting our CTE programs to ensure our students and families are aware of the many opportunities that are available. CTE Month is a perfect time to recognize the impact of these programs on our student success and the amazing teachers that we have that are part of our CTE program. Your support helps ensure that we continue preparing students for life beyond the classroom, and I also want to thank our local businesses and partners for being a big part of this important effort. And with that, I will hand it off to Dr. Kupicki for Superintendent Comments.
Thank you, Mr. Walter. I just want to congratulate all the recipients this evening of the awards they received, the various different awards we hand on a consistent basis. And I think one of the things that continues to be evident is the outstanding educators that we have here in Cabarrus County, beginning with Patrick McCarthy this evening playing the piano for the students who sang the National Anthem from Odell Elementary School, seeing folks like Melissa Cahill, who was our Counselor of the Year this recent past week. It was announced she's at Patriots Elementary School. Then seeing folks like Karen Gion, Karen Wright, and Bart Tolbert here this evening, and then finishing up with Nato Mejia, last year's Beginning Teacher of the Year, and seeing Summer Espinoza being nominated again. These things don't happen by accident, they happen because of the excellence that exists here in Cabarrus County Schools. And I think we just really need to focus on that as much as possible, every chance that we get, and continue to thank those individuals that are in the classrooms every single day because they're doing tremendous work with our students, and the results speak for themselves. As I tell everyone, when our students compete, no matter what it is, the arts, the humanities, academically, athletically, whatever extracurricular event they participate in, locally, at the state level, and at the national level across this country, they perform exceedingly well and represent our county in extraordinary fashion. So again, I want to thank those individuals for the great work that they do and to continue to point out the excellence that our teachers bring to the classroom every day. It's because of them and the work that we do with them and our partnerships with all the community, especially our parents. It's the reason why we exhibit and continue to exude such excellence here in Cabarrus County. So I thank them for that, and it's always refreshing as a superintendent to see that. I think it's a great way to start a meeting and to recognize and acknowledge those great people here in our school system. It really sends home the message of what our why is. And it always comes back to seeing those individuals and how they impact kids. And that is our why, making sure that we're helping the students and the children here in Cabarrus County. So I'm deeply appreciative of them, and I admire their great work. Another group of individuals that are incredible and we support without question here in Cabarrus County, and they do unbelievable work on a daily basis, not just in our schools, but in our community, are our School Resource Officers. And the School Resource Officers are going to be celebrated this Wednesday because it's Appreciation Day of all the SROs here in Cabarrus County. And it's a time to recognize the incredible men and women who serve as SROs in our schools. One of our SROs, Officer Travis Burke from Harris Road Middle School, is here tonight serving as our Board Meeting SRO. We thank him for that. We want to thank the outstanding partnership that we have with the Cabarrus County Sheriff's Office and the Concord Police Department, and the continued funding from our county commissioners as they support that endeavor here in Cabarrus County. It is unusual to have an SRO in every school, and yet Cabarrus County has that. It is a blessing, and it's a wonderful thing that we have here in Cabarrus County, and I really appreciate that support from our county commissioners and making sure that all of our schools are safe and continuing to protect us by supporting our SROs there. So thank you to them, and we're grateful to the commitment and the protection that you offer us. I can speak personally, I do not take that lightly. I value and sincerely appreciate the work they do on a daily basis, not just in our schools, but in our communities, keeping us safe. The brave individuals that put their lives on the line for all of us in our community deserve a round of applause, so I thank them for that. A reminder that our schools will be closed on Friday, February 14th, and Monday, February 17th for staff development. Our early colleges will operate on a normal schedule. Our kindergarten enrollment is underway. Next fall, Cabarrus County Schools are thrilled to welcome the class of 2038. I do not think I'll be here as superintendent then, but they continue to come. So again, if you need any information, please look at our website, at the Cabarrus County Schools website. You can find all the information there for kindergarten registration. And if you need any help, please do not hesitate to reach out and call our schools and ask to speak to the principals, and they will guide you through that process. And we welcome all the new kindergarten enrollees that will be coming here in Cabarrus County. Program choice notification, our parent notification of placement into program choice for next school year began today in the online family dashboard. Our parents will have until Monday, February 17th, 2025, to make a decision and accept a seat. Any seats not accepted within this window will be forfeited to wait-listed students. And then lastly, this month is Love the Bus Month. And I want to commend Mr. Mills because he's representing that very well this evening with his shirt, which is a great way to celebrate Love the Bus Month. But we recognize and appreciate all of our school bus drivers who safely transport our students every day, and these professionals play a vital role in our educational system, ensuring that our students arrive at school ready to learn and return home safely. So let's take this month to show our gratitude for their hard work, patience, and commitment to our students and families. Just a simple thank you can go a long way in recognizing the incredible contribution to our schools. And it is those kind words and those messages of thanks to our bus drivers that do go a long way, so please let them know how much you appreciate them and what they do for us on a daily basis. That's all, Mr. Walters, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Kupicki. We will move on to Section 7, which is Board Committee Review. And our first item is the Board Committee Review. Essentially after last week, when we got our financial update, it became clear that we could use a little more oversight on some of our finances, so we're going to create a Finance Committee. This will be a standing committee that will be monthly, and it will be open to the public. So the committee will provide regular updates, review budget allocations, ensure financial accountability within the school system. And by fostering open communications, the Cabarrus County Board of Education aims to engage the community with its financial stewardship. As I said, the public is welcome to that committee, and the three members that will be on this committee will be myself, a Board Member Melanie Freeman, and Board Member Sam Treadaway. And we're, again, like, once a month, we'll start here in this room. It'll be the fourth Thursday of the month. So that's a little bit different from what was on the chart that was on the board docs, but that is essentially for our Finance Director to have all the information that he compiles every month available for us to review. So that'll be, again, another standing committee, and still opportunities to think about potential other committees that we might want, especially ones that have community involvement, but we're not going to do that tonight. We'll continue to work on those. But I do want to give our Board members that are on committees an opportunity to give us an update on what meetings that they've attended or how our committees are going. So if I can start with our Legislative Agenda Committee, and we do have an item on our agenda for a little bit, I'll go ask Greg Mills to give us an update.
Sure, so the Legislative Agenda Committee is working towards their first deliverable for you tonight. I want to thank all the Board members. We've got a lot of great feedback this time, a lot of very specific and creative asks that we look forward to putting in front of our legislators. And I do want to thank Dr. Kupicki and Dustin Schu for the efforts that they put in, sort of tolerating my questions and some of Melanie's questions on these committee meetings, and also the extreme amount of work they put in to sort of compile this into a narrative that's easily digestible for our legislators. I appreciate all the work that you guys put into it, and I look forward to those two agenda items later in the meeting tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. And our other Board Committee is the Legal Affairs Committee. And Catherine, can you have an update for us?
Sam and I serve on the Legal Affairs Committee, and we met with Dr. Kupicki this past week, and I appreciate the time they both spent with me going over a lot of information concerning our attorneys, and I felt like it's information that the whole Board could benefit from. So I asked Dr. Kupicki if he would go back over all of this information for us on our training day, and he agreed to do that. And then Sam and I will discuss where we want to go next with this committee.
Thank you, Catherine. Any other Board members attended any other committees that they want to share on? All right, so we'll move on to our guest speaker portion of the meeting. So we've actually had two that signed up today. And I had Keisha Sanders had signed up first, are you here? There you are. Welcome to the podium.
Good evening, I hope you all are well. Pam and Sam, I want to first say thank you all for showing your ability to work across the aisles last month and picking a candidate who you felt that other Board members would support. I do, I am very sorry that you thought that Greg would support you in that and go against his party in selecting another member of the party. So I apologize if that occurred. Melanie, while you were trying to convince us that singing Negro spirituals as a child would make you not colorblind, Rob, while you were telling us that you had to work with the county commission and pick their candidates so that they would work with you when you know very well that they have to work with you, and Catherine, while you were submitting to us that your friend would be the best person for this job, our schools across this district are struggling with lunch balances. Do you know that they are tens of thousands of dollars in debt for lunch balances? And what is this Board doing about it? I don't know. But I do think that you should keep that on your radar and be talking to these principals about how they raise money to make sure that schools don't go broke and our kids don't go hungry. I can tell you that my child's school is over $10,000 in lunch debt, and we are only in February. We are only in one month of this semester, but we haven't been talking about that. We've been talking about things that really don't matter, things that don't create opportunities for our children to make sure that they eat and our schools do not go broke. I remember talking about the same issue when I was here on this Board. Can you guys tell me what you're doing about it? My answer would be no. Shannon, you have a lucrative business in this county. You have friends that have lucrative businesses in this county. Are you going to work with them and on your platform, instead of allowing your husband to, on his platform, talk about, "Oh, my wife is great and she's on this Board"? Are you going to work with those folks to make sure that these lunch balances are paid? Are you guys going to use your platforms to make sure that our schools are not going broke? I don't see that in our budget anywhere, but I'll tell you that these schools are struggling. They're struggling to make sure that they don't go and not have money at the end of the year for trying to pay for students to eat. I hope you all have a plan, and I hope you have a plan fast. And stop talking about things that don't matter. The things that matter are our schools not going broke and our kids eating. Thank you all.
Thank you, Ms. Sanders. Our second speaker was Mr. Paul Wannas. Welcome to the podium.
Thank you. It's live. Okay, thank you. Welcome all. Good evening, Board members, and Dr. Kupicki. Special welcome to Ms. Lancaster. My first of two topics is almost every school campus in Cabarrus County properties now fails to comply with the North Carolina Building and Plumbing Codes. By definition, these would all fall into the unsanitary category with remediation requirements addressed through several North Carolina laws. Most module units are 20 by 30 feet wooden structures without any running water. The Board runs the largest trailer park in the county, and most of the 40 campuses are currently operating over the capacity that the architect who designed the buildings for them had in mind. for them had in mind. It's like having four families living in a duplex home. After more than six months, the county manager and commissioners are getting involved but continue with the view that they really can't afford the district. This is wrong. Legally, the district is a state entity separate from the county. This is clearly called out in your Policy 1000 and says that your district is a body corporate, meaning that it's not a government segment of the Cabarrus County. The county commissioners are a service provider to you with an obligation by the law. Reading the law, the needs of the cost of the buildings, equipment, and apparatus shall be presented. The board of the commissioners shall provide the funds. How all this happened is now history, but looking forward, there are obligations to immediately fix violations of several North Carolina general statutes, which I've highlighted before. The budget planning cycle is not viable for immediate needs. I'd suggest at this point engaging an architect. DPI construction has them, and outside contracting firms are an option to assess the code violation efforts across the district and provide a professional assessment of remediation and needs. The realignment study that was put in place did nothing to address this at all. As a second topic, the superintendent is required by law to file an affidavit on April and October over the kindergarten through three through third grade class size. This hasn't happened since last April without any regulation, regulatory directive to change the law. Because the interpretation can be tricky, I offer these suggestions. Each class must be assessed independently to comply. I've never seen any evidence that this has occurred nor documentation made public. When numbers are required, the input and the input is an integer average. You must use roundup, or it's called sealinging, because partial teachers or students just don't work. There are few classes or campuses that are exempt. Restart schools, including Rocky River, Winkoff, Urban Elementary, and Royal Oaks are effectively completely exempt. And immersion classes at Mandarin and Spanish are exempt, not the rest of the school. No other waivers have been provided to date from DPI. These topics need to be addressed and soon. On a side note, there was a follow-up that the district is supposed to have a due by March 16th, when the solution is supposed to be documented and provided to the building inspector. So we'll see how the next month plays out. Thank you very much for your time.
Okay, Mr. Wallace, the superintendent Kopicy wants to respond.
Mr. Wallace, in terms of class size, just to clarify for me, where are you getting your data from?
So, first, there's the law that says it's 18, 16, 17, 17.
I understand the law. I'm asking you where you're getting our class size data. You're saying we're not compliant. I'm just curious as to where you're getting your class size data.
So I tried to get the information. I put in a public record request, which I got partially satisfied through the public request process, and it showed averages by school. And in there, there were schools that were admitted in trying to calculate the averages. So there were some schools that probably should have been included that may not have been. In looking at the affidavit that was filed in April, which also came out of the public request, public records request, it was a one-page document you signed, and the backup behind that was also unavailable. DPI was unable to provide any backup for any documents they received either. So I don't know where the data was, but it did not show up.
Okay. Well, just to clarify for you, just to address that issue in particular, we are in compliance across the board, have been all of last year and all of this year in our K3 classrooms. I think you've sat with Mr. Ferrer several occasions, or at least I know on one occasion go over this. So I will happily show you at the end of this meeting, we're in compliance. We are in compliance, 100%. So I just take issue when you come up and say we're not complying, don't have the accurate data. I don't want to get into a back and forth here, but I'll happily meet with you after this meeting and show you the data.
I'd love to do that. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Wallace. All right, we'll move on. We've got the approval. We're on to section. Section 9 is approval of the consent agenda, and there is a lot on there because these are all the discussion items that we went through last month. We got our questions answered, and we had enough information to make a decision on our consent agenda items. So I would need a motion and a second to approve our consent agenda.
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, motion by Mr. Treadaway, a second by Ms. Escobar. Any further discussion on the consent agenda? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, our consent agenda passes. So we have a few action items, or hopefully action items, we'll see. First one is our board legislative agenda that Greg mentioned before, and we have Dr. John Kopicy and Dustin Schu that are going to go over our priorities. Okay. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Schu. Again, I want to echo the appreciation of the board for going over this legislative agenda with us. What Mr. Schu is going to go over with the board this evening are the key areas across the board that the entire board had continued to talk about and discuss. So what you see here is a summation of those key topics. This is not a final draft. What we're looking for here is for the board to approve this legislative agenda, and then myself and Mr. Schu and our cabinet will then go back and break these priority areas down for the board so that we have our legislative agenda meeting on the 17th, which I believe is a week today, if I'm accurate on that. We'll have that presentation prepared for the 17th to go over that with the public at that meeting at that time. Again, we'll break all that information down, but for now, Mr. Schu is going to kind of go over this in a general mode, and if you have any questions, please feel free to ask them. But again, I appreciate the board's input and their thoughtfulness in putting these areas together. Mr. Schu?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Dr. Kopicy and Board of Education members. Tonight, you are considering the approval of the board's 2025 legislative agenda. This agenda was developed under the coordination of Mr. Mills and Ms. Freeman, who served as representatives for the Legislative Agenda Board Committee. The process involved reviewing the legislative priorities of state and national educational organizations, gathering input from each board member, and synthesizing that input to identify key focus areas. As a result, five legislative priorities were established for the 2025 legislative agenda: recruiting and retaining quality teachers, strengthening education funding, reforming the school accountability model, increasing flexibility and regulatory reform, and enhancing school safety. I'm happy to answer any questions regarding the process as I turn it back over to the board for your consideration.
Before you do that, Mr. Walters, I'd like to point out, Ms. Freeman, I apologize. I didn't want to admit you either. You were a key part of all this in terms of the committee and putting that together for us last week, and spent quite a bit of time with this going over, so I do appreciate your input as well. So thank you for your leadership.
Okay, and we were kind of rushing this because we do have that meeting you mentioned, hopefully scheduled for next week with our legislators, so we wanted to have something that we were all on board with that we could talk about at that meeting. So these are the items that we have come up with, and is there any further discussion on them or anything that's omitted or something?
Do you need a motion before we have discussion? I'm willing to make that motion.
Okay, let's have a motion to approve the legislative agenda here for 2025.
I move that we approve the legislative agenda for 2025.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
And a second? Okay, further discussion, back to discussions again. Go ahead.
I just want to say thank you. I know that everyone on the board contributed a lot of things, and you can't possibly capture everything that we're trying to do, but I think you did a really nice job of trying to synthesize all of that and recognize that this is a conversation starter. This is an opportunity for us to talk to our legislators, our new legislators. They're getting, what I keep on saying to people is they're getting one of these sheets from everybody. So overwhelming them with lots of detail and information, I don't think would be helpful if I was new in the job. So I just appreciate that we're starting that dialogue, that we're having good relationships with them, and that I'm looking forward to the conversations that continue out of this. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Escobar. Melanie, do you have anything? Greg?
I'll just add that we intend to have this committee continue to meet throughout the year several times to sort of make adjustments to this as necessary, be more of a living document, where we may come back to the board, sort of like we do with policies, and recommend some changes to this as we go forward, as we seek to build those relationships with our legislatures and respond to stuff that may be coming in front of the legislature over the course of the rest of the year.
Thank you. Mr. Mills? Shannon, you have any, if you want to add, so you're okay with these items?
I am. I think they're good areas. I think it's a good start. I don't think it's too much overwhelming at first, so it's a good start.
Yeah, it's nice to keep it to one page. That's good.
Yes, that's always good.
Catherine, anything?
I think it looks great.
Okay, Sam?
Just want to say I applaud the idea of this group staying intact and meeting routinely because there looks like there's a chance that we may have to have a lot more conversations depending on what happens at the federal level. So I think that's wise.
Thank you for the feedback. So we've got a motion and a second to approve our 2025 legislative agenda on the table. So we'll vote for that. All in favor, say aye. Aye? Anybody opposed? Okay, so we have a legislative agenda approved by the board for next week's discussion with our legislators, which will move us on to their next item, which is adjusting some of our board meeting calendar dates. And that first one, what is that legislative agenda meeting? Because there was a conflict for March, and there was a need to move it up into February. And I think, did we get a commitment from all our legislators to come next week? Is that my understanding or your understanding?
Yes, we have contacted our three state representatives, Mr. Escheveria, Mr. Almond, and Mr. Camel will be here next Monday. We will also reach out to other elected officials as we move forward, but we have commitments from those three to be here next Monday.
Okay, so that date is Monday, February 17th, next week. I guess we need a motion and a second to add that or adjust that date on our calendar.
So move.
Motion by Mr. Treadaway. Second by Mrs. Moore. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Anybody opposed? All right, so we're adding that one to our calendar for next week. So the next one we have is our spring planning session discussion. And again, we had a very robust discussion at our winter planning session, and we have a need to continue our discussions on some other important items facing the school system. So we have two dates here on our potential dates on the calendar. One was for Monday, April 28th, and the other one was for Wednesday, April 30th, and we want to make sure that essentially most of us can attend either of those dates and if there's a conflict. And Lori, I think you were trying to gather to see if there are any conflicts for that?
Information from everybody, but everybody needed to check their calendar.
Okay, was there a preferred date?
I did not receive a preferred date. Both dates are good for me. Any other ones?
My preference is Mondays.
Okay. Would you like to make that motion for the?
So moved, Monday.
So we have a motion?
April 20th.
Yeah, for Monday, April 28th. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Ms. Lancaster. All in favor of that Monday, April 28th date for our spring planning session, say aye. Aye? Anybody opposed? All right, so we'll add that one to our calendar. And then our last item was additional training session in person with board members that would be conducted by our board attorney, and we had with the additional items from Dr. Kopicy. And we have a couple of dates for that one, so what's our preferred date? Shannon?
There's a conflict Monday, February 24th, the other two are fine.
Okay, so there's a conflict for you on the 24th. I'm open for all those dates. Anyone else? Pam?
Again, I have a preference for Mondays, so if we can't do the 24th in February, then I would move to do March 24th.
Okay. Does March 24th work for everybody? Okay, so we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Treadaway. All in favor of adding our board training date for Monday, March 24th? Say aye. Aye? Anybody opposed? Okay, so we have a board training date set for March 24th. So that actually concludes our business currently, so we do have a need for a closed session. And let me read that for a motion. We'll need a motion and a second that the board convene in closed session to consult with its attorneys pursuant to General Statute 14331811A3 and to consider confidential personal matters pursuant to General Statute 14331811A6.
Seven.
Motion by Ms. Escobar.
Second.
Second by Mr. Mills. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor of that moving into closed session? Say aye. Aye? Anybody opposed? All right, so we will say goodnight to our listening audience, and we'll be in closed session. Thank you.